My apologies, we are a little bit late getting started this evening, but we have just wound up a workshop in regards to our review of the audit for 2023. Good to have that done and a little earlier than in the year than we normally see that. Appreciate the work of our staff for making that happen. And so let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled convened and called Greer City Council meeting held February the 27th, 2024. Having duly assembled the meeting, I'd like to ask Councilman Jay Arrowood if he would lead us in a pledge of allegiance and then an invocation for council. You are welcome to stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, you have for decades, even centuries blessed our city. You've blessed our people, that our citizens who have made their lives here. Or you've blessed our city with leadership and you've blessed our city with very talented individuals who we call our staff. And I thank you for all of that. I pray, Lord, that as we go through this meeting and as we go through all of our meetings and as this council leads your city, that we'll do your will, that when we're all gone and there's a new group of citizens and a new council, they will know that you have always had your hand in our city. I thank you for giving me and this council the opportunity to serve you and to serve this, to serve your city. Forgive me of my sins, in Jesus' holy name I pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that then, council, let's move to the minutes contained in your packet. That would be the February 13th meeting, 2024. I entertain a motion that they be received.
So moved.
Second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, departmental reports are contained in your packet. Department heads or Mr. Mayor will be glad to assist you with those. And we have, as Howell with us this evening to bring us our financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Give you a brief summary of the financials as of January 31st, 2024. Starting out with the general fund, the year-to-date revenue is $23,621,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $25,254,000, and that is 5% under budget. The cash balance in the general fund now is $18,112,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $2157,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $2,775,000. And the cash balance in the hospitality fund now is $1,946,000. Finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1158,000. The total expenditures are $1,432,000, and the cash balance in the account is $2,397,000. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Floor is open for questions, comments. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the council if they would, if they haven't reviewed the fire department's report, to go to their EMS arrival delays graph that the chief provides us. And just to note that in one month of EMS operations that we have, let's see, 16 calls that we have responded to where it took EMS more than 20 minutes to arrive. Eight of those are 30 minutes and greater, and then two minutes or greater. Two of them are 40 minutes plus, which could, anything over 40 minutes. That's totally unacceptable and we're going to have, we need to find a way to deal with that.
So noted. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. With that then, council, let's move on to the administrator's report. Mr. Mayorman.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. Real quick, I want to remind everybody that if you hadn't gotten your tickets for the Greer Children's Theater, they will be presenting Finding Nemo Jr. on March 1st at 7:00, Saturday, March 2nd at 2:00 and 7:00, and Sunday, March 3rd at 2:00 at the Cannon Center. So get your tickets. I also want to remind y'all that your statements of economic interest, it's that time of year again, will be due at the end of March, 3/30 of 24. So please be sure to get those SEIs completed, the sooner, the better. And my last, my last line item here on the administrator's report, I want to turn over to Chief Flowers, and I'd like for him to fill in the blanks on this, this whole.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. If you remember last week, I mentioned that we were waiting on results from our ISO rating, and I'm happy to announce that we maintained our one. So the effective date, which doesn't really matter at this point, is June 1st, but we're already at one, so we are remaining at one. I just wanted to update everybody on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. I do want to thank council and, and staff once again for the participation and preparation for the retreat last Thursday and Friday. It was, it worked out, I think, fantastic and was, was very beneficial for the guidance that we need to move into this budget season. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'm through for the evening.
Thank you, sir. And indeed, I echo his remarks. This is, I told my wife after the second day, this is the first time in, in a long time that we have been able to gather all, all of us in one room for two days. And I know that takes some planning on everybody's part, takes some commitment on everybody's part, and I know that family and business and a lot of other things need our attention, but to be able to have dedicated that kind of time and interest to attending to the businesses of the city is not without y'all's direct attention to that, and I really appreciate it. It made the, made our time together much more valuable. So thank you for being a part of that. With that, we'll move to old business. We only have one item of old business this evening. It's the second and final reading of ordinance number 9-2024. It's an ordinance to change the zoning classification of a certain property owned by J&amp;A Holdings Group LLC located at 107 East Bearden Street from CG to TN. Any newer additional information in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number 9-2024?
No, sir.
With that then, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
She got it.
And a second.
She got it.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion, a second. Floor is open for discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Council, let's move to new business items this evening, the first of which is the bid summary for the turf maintenance products at the Greer Golf Course. I don't know why I'm having such much trouble getting this out tonight. Parks and Recreation and Tourism Departments listed bids for turf management products at Greer Golf. Staff recommends a bid awarded to Corbin Turf. Mr. Watson joins us for that conversation. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a bid tabulation for turf maintenance products at our golf course. It's basically fungicides, herbicides, selective fertilizers, and other chemicals that we treat our grass with, primarily the putting greens, but also the fairways and tee boxes, parts of the rough. We spec, we spec Brent products, as we've had success with them over the past several years, probably well over a decade dating back to when it was a private country club. We're recommending the bid be awarded to Corbin Turf. They were not the low bidder, but they were the only vendor to submit Brent products, and they're still under the approved amount in our budget.
Thank you, sir. This comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. This evening, we have the first reading of ordinance number 7-2024. Lumos, Lumos.
Lumos.
Lumos. Lumos. Lumos Fiber of South Carolina LLC has submitted a request for a franchise agreement with the city of Greer to install fiber infrastructure throughout the city in conjunction with its build-out of their fiber network in the upstate of South Carolina. Ben Brazil joins us this evening and is in attendance to address questions that we might have. This is presented by David Seifert. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council. What you have before you tonight is an ordinance with an attachment, which is the franchise agreement being presented for your consideration. I would do a quick introduction of Ben Brazil. He has a quick presentation he would like to show you that will fill in some more details and maps of their system. So, Mr. Brazil, if you'd like to come up and present your information, please.
Oh, it's right there. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council, administration, thank you so much. My name is Ben Brazil, and I'm here with Lumos Fiber, fiber optic company out of High Point, North Carolina. And our opportunity in Greer is one to invest in the next generation of broadband internet. The last many years since the pandemic, we have had money from the federal government, ARPO was mentioned tonight, to go out and build out fiber optic networks to people that have not had broadband in rural counties. So we find ourselves in the unique position now where ironically, the rural, low-density areas have fiber optic networks, and the core structures, the cities like Greer, are still stuck with the telephone twisted pair copper or the cable hybrid fiber optic and copper cable networks, which are not going to stand the test of time based on data usage with movies downloading and children needing to be at home when they have to do remote learning, people that work from home. There's going to be incredible data needs, and ironically, we thought that the cable was going to be the best medium that people could come up with. We came up with glass. Fiber optic glass is the best medium possible for transmitting data. It can go from five to 40 times as fast as the cable that you have in your house today with Spectrum or with other cable companies. So our company is 100% fiber optics. We expanded out of North Carolina and Virginia, which is our home territory. We're legacy ILEC telephone companies in North Carolina, Virginia have been there forever. Two years ago, we have a private equity backer who infused us with a great deal of capital to go into the fiber optic broadband business, and the first expansion state that we announced last year was South Carolina. So we have been in Richland and Lexington Counties, Irma, Casey, West Columbia, and Columbia for the last six months constructing. We are now constructing, we have a franchise in Spartanburg, Calpens, and all of Spartanburg County. We're working through the process with Duncan, and in the next four or five months, we'll be moving to Greenville County, starting with Greer, and then moving into the upstate, upside of Greenville County up to Travelers Rest. So our job is to replace that old copper. Thank you, sir. I don't know if my finger was right. So my name is Ben Brazil. I'm the director of new market development for Lumos. I spent 28 years in the telecom industry with AT&amp;T, which was Bell South at the time, and then the last 25 years with Spectrum, the cable network. And I joined the company four months ago because I went through this revolution back in the 90s and early 2000s when we installed cable and cable modems. This is a generational shift. It's a little disruptive because we have to bury the cable, the fiber optic cable, and that's why we're asking for a franchise to do that. We're planning on reaching a million underserved households with 100% fiber optic internet by 2027. Right now, we currently stand at about 300,000 pass, so we're trying to triple in the next three years. And South Carolina is a major piece of that. That's the evolution of our company. We used to be an ILEC telecom company out of North Carolina. We merged with a telecom company in Virginia, and then two years ago, we got the infusion of capital and we became Lumos, which is a 100% fiber optic company focused on broadband. That's our expansion markets. Of course, we're already working in Columbia and Lexington. We have all of our franchises in those counties, and we've got the Spartanburg franchise, and now we're moving over towards Greenville. And just to give you an idea of the comprehensive nature of what we're trying to do, this is our Spartanburg County map that we're building right now. Unlike AT&amp;T, who is also in the fiber game and is actually deploying fiber to new neighborhoods selectively, we are trying to do it in a more comprehensive manner. And you'll be able to see in the next slide where we are moving over to Greer. That's the, the yellow outline is the city limits of Greer, and then we're moving heavily into the northern Greenville County area. Right now, we just have the north, kind of that north section of Greer that we plan to build, and then that area over by Duncan, the green section over to the, to the northeast. But as we, as that, as we expand, that could change. We're a residential-focused company. We do not provide it to businesses, so we're focused on residential broadband. That's probably why they engineered it that way. That's just a, that map is a closer-in view of the neighborhoods and areas that we plan to cover in the city of Greer under the design maps currently. And if all goes well with council, our plan is to start constructing that fiber in the city of Greer in late summer 2024. So that's what we ask, ask of you tonight. A couple of things that we have found that we just want to make sure that we get your feedback on and your approval for, obviously the franchise. And then a streamlined permitting process so we can make the construction process as fast as possible. For a city the size of Greer, we anticipate it could last anywhere from six to nine months in getting that fiber in. But once you get that fiber in, it is fiber that will last for 30, 40 years. It's the last medium that I can think of that we're going to need in terms of broadband. The speed of light going down a glass is probably about the fastest thing where physics are concerned that we're going to need in terms of processing broadband. But we need to get it, we need to get it done. And the first person to do it, the first group to do it is going to take a few arrows because we, it's a comprehensive job. We've got to go in and dig up, you know, put it in the right way. So feedback to us, that's why they hired me. I'm from Chapin, so I am their new market development director, so I'm right down the road, and I'm handling everything in South Carolina for them. So I'm one person of accountability to government officials, elected officials in administration through this process. And to help us keep your citizens apprised as to where our construction crews will be working each week, our engineers send out street sheets to you and anyone on your staff that, where every single day, you get a street sheet on where we are during the construction process. So when they call in and wonder what's happening and why the crews are there in their neighborhood, you have that information. Obviously, we're concerned with digital equity and digital literacy partnership. We just want a state grant from the Office of Regulatory Staff in Columbia to build out an additional 700 homes in Spartanburg that are previously unserved completely, not just overbuilding their cable, but they had no internet. So digital equity is something that we are, we are completely aware of and focused on as well as we build out our core network in the higher-density areas. And along those lines, help to identify socially vulnerable areas in the county that are underserved with affordable high-speed broadband. We are a small enough company. We're 480 employees versus with Spectrum, I was 987,000 employees, so we're very responsive and we try to be very flexible with you all. And that is, that is my presentation. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Thank you very much for your time.
Will you go back in one slide to the, just the one we had up there before?
Yes, sir.
Um, and this is, this is, you're welcome to answer if you like. I think this, this may be more of a staff answer than anything else. It's been quite some time since we've done a franchise agreement in regards to any type of communicable service. Why, why an agreement at this point? I thought the state had stepped in on, on that.
The, the state law for franchises, the most recent change was more in relation to cable companies. So when, when you read through state law, there's a section for cable, there's a section for telecom, and then internet companies kind of fall in the telecom side. So they are, and you're right, we haven't had a franchise agreement in a long time, but the, where we used to have specific franchises for cable, those were rolled into the state franchise. The telecoms still maintain a local business license, and then the internet companies are a kind of a subset of that where they still maintain a franchise agreement, but because they are internet, they do not pay business licenses. It's just a little subset of telecom. But they are required under state law to maintain a franchise agreement with the local authority.
So without the business license and, and without, being rude, we, we, we have no leverage then in the same regard to the telecom companies or anybody else with, with a partnership or a franchise agreement with, with this company? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. You want to address that? I mean, one of the, one of the things that we run into often is complaints about cable service and, and about issues related to that. And, you know, it used to be we, we'd tell them to call their legislators, and legislators now say, you know, tough luck. So how would, how would that look in terms of our response to your company in regards to issues that might need to be addressed either in the installation or in the service?
Well, I'm dealing with those right now in the markets that we're in because the most disruptive process is the construction process, obviously. I don't know, you may get calls about the price or other things later on, but ours is a passive optical network, so it's, you're not going to get pixelization. You may get no service at some point in time. But yeah, the way the state law was, was constructed was because of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 to encourage what's happening now, which is to give citizens competition. It does take away some of the leverage of local governments, but you have a lot of power in terms of the way we conduct business, just by definition that we're in your city. You don't have the same tools. I fought that battle when I was in the cable company at Spectrum because the actual franchise regime is under two different sections of law, Title 58. Title 58-12 is the cable franchise regime whereby it's 5% of revenues, and as you said, it's handled at the Secretary of State's office, starting in 2006. You all used to do that. And then in 58-9 is the telecommunications section that David was referring to, and that, we're a subset of that. So it does, it does, it requires a partnership, and that's why my company has hired me and asked me to be here. And I'm working with four counties, Richland, Lexington, Spartanburg, and Greenville, according to our business model. But, you know, there are things that we can negotiate that I was mentioning to David about connecting to public parks or those types of things, but, but the state law pretty much is, is as David described it, it's, it's not a universal approach to franchises. And the reason that you probably haven't had one in a while is, going back to my earlier statements, Mr. Mayor, it's nobody has really wanted to take the arrows to have to reconstruct the basic infrastructure for the medium of the network until now. AT&amp;T might do it, you know, they're under a telecom regime. They might do it in selective neighborhoods, so they already have a franchise from 1920 or whatever it was. Nobody wants to take the arrows to be in front of you doing what I'm doing right now. It's the hardest part of the process. So, but it's, but it's very beneficial to your citizens because they'll get the next generation of broadband network, and they'll get a measure of competition, which is very tough in a capital-intensive telecom business to find an option. It's usually a monopoly or a duopoly, and I do think this is what the TA 96, Telecommunications Act of 1996 envisioned, you know, 30 years ago. But ideally, people will have a choice in broadband once we're done with this process. That's the best answer I can give you.
So again, let me, my next question is in regard to something that I, I think is going to be most appropriate to staff, but you're welcome to weigh in on this as well, too. Just in scrolling through this franchise agreement, and I certainly have not read it verbatim, it refers repeatedly to installation that would be underground in reference to the city of Greer right-of-way, and then it talks about overhead, obviously on poles or whatever, as part of the city of Greer. I know there is some intertwining of what the city of Greer owns in terms of right-of-way and, and that sort of thing, but is this something that is a separate agreement with CPW, or do we physically control those right-of-ways?
I don't know. I guess is your question, does Lumos have a separate agreement with CPW?
We don't at this time, but if you, if you want me to weigh in, I can.
Yeah, I mean, is it as simple as a pole agreement, like?
Ah, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, and I, and you had actually turned me on after Mr. Burns, you were nice enough to turn me on, and I met the CPW head, he's a Newberry guy. And we're prepping for that because we don't know that we can go totally underground in Greer, and we will need, we will need to have an agreement with CPW.
Yeah, there's co-location agreements that I, you're going to have to have with CPW, but as far as the franchise.
Not at right-of-ways or anything like that.
That's right. And the right-of-way is the city's right-of-way, and CPW has unrestricted rights within that right-of-way, but the co-location agreement is, is separate than burying, the agreement is, I understand this. So you would have a similar agreement with CPW and with Duke Power as well?
Absolutely. I did this a lot with, in my Spectrum days and with electric co-ops in the rural areas, of course, and it's, they have, they have, you know, they have the poles, so we have to negotiate with them to get on the poles if we need to, if we go aerial.
What percentage do you think will be aerial?
Probably about 20% with Lumos. With Spectrum, it was about 50/50. But this company does a pretty good job, and that's a very tough thing to do, to, to put it underground. It's a real commitment. Our guys go in and they dig potholes every 25 feet even after it's marked, because as you all know, the water in the sewer and the gas has evolved over many decades, and sometimes even the maps aren't right. And so, you know, we pay them an extra quarter foot or something. I don't know the terms, but we, but we have our contractors actually dig potholes every 25 feet, which is way above industry standard, out of an abundance of caution because we are going so much underground. And it looks disruptive during the process of construction because of that. That's just a safety measure, but by four or five o'clock, they clean it up, they're out of the way. When people come home from work and eat dinner, they're fine. And then after a period of five or six weeks, we're through with that neighborhood and we move on to the next one, so.
So if you are going down a city right-of-way, then it comes to a state street. Are you able to go under that state street without?
No, sir. We're simultaneously working with Samir and the Department of Transportation, DOT Spartanburg office, and yeah, we have to make sure we have that permission as well. So we have to work with the city staff to make sure we have everything coordinated. Otherwise, we come to a halt, and that's not good for us either.
Okay, so.
Okay, so you, you come to that street, and if they don't give you permission to bore under, you have to go overhead?
That would be your two options. Yes, sir.
See, that's what happened on Davenport, that last installation, I guess, by Spectrum or whoever was, they've got the potholes, whatever you call the basins, the plastic?
Yes, sir. Cabinets, we call them.
Cabinets.
Yes, sir.
All the way down Davenport to Duke's poles on Church Street, and then it goes aerial.
So coming down Point Set Street, we'd probably be adding another line, another aerial.
Our plan does not, I don't think, include Point Set Street. You could tell me if I'm wrong, but it's, I don't, I don't know if this map will help you or not. If that reaches into full downtown, I can get you that information. I apologize.
Go back to that last.
It's, it's going to be an aerial on either Duke's poles.
Oh, okay.
It's either going to be on Duke's poles or CPW's poles, yes.
On Point Set.
On Point Set.
Forgive me, Councilman, I, I was thinking of a different street.
So that's kind of my question is, you're not planning to cover all of Greer, just certain neighborhoods, right?
Not at this time. We're not, we're not going to heavy commercial districts right now. That's not part of our business plan. We go into residential areas. So the purple is where we're planning, where we're engineering. Now, that could change. It could expand based on some of the feedback we get from you all.
But you're not planning to go down Point Set?
Well, I, I was thinking of Point Set that I saw right down here, but I, I'm not sure I know the city's geography well enough to comment.
If, if it's inside this purple, yes.
Yeah, it's inside the purple. It's inside the purple, yeah.
I don't know how it couldn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's going down Point Set. And then the other, what I did notice is that we have tremendous growth south of I-85, which should be considered in, which is in Spartanburg County. I do not think you've got that identified, do you?
You'll go to the previous map?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brazil, it'll, that one, no.
This one?
You'll see I-85.
Mm-hmm.
The bottom of your screen.
Yeah, see the airport and the BMW.
South of I-85, to answer your question.
Yeah, nope. We are, we have not, we have not engineered plans to go down there yet, Councilman. But that could change, you know, based on new developments, new growth. This is the plan we have right now. We have not fully gotten our permits. We're not going to Greer until late summer. So we're building in Spartanburg right now, but this is the preliminary engineering plans that I'm showing you here today.
I would assume that this is a density model, so I think that's probably one of the reasons what you're seeing right now is that foot, you know, feet on the ground is going to be in the most densely populated areas, and then the other areas will be secondary.
Yep, residential areas. We're, we're, we didn't start our model with any subsidy grants, which is where the low-density are getting, you know, construction where I did with Spectrum. But we have gotten some grants now to go into some low-density areas. But yes, there's a density element, absolutely.
Yeah. One of the things that, I, I, I think we, in, in Greer, and in probably other cities around, but in Greer especially, where we have Duke Power and Commission of Public Works, we have an abundance of utility poles with an abundance of wires crossing. We'd have some really pretty drives coming through town if we didn't have so many wires. And now we have a forest of utility poles that have been, where the electrical service has been taken off because the, the pole has, it's been damaged or it's, it's decayed, whatever the reason. And the power company has installed a new one, moved their power, but we're, but in order to get the, the old pole out, you're waiting on either cable or phone or some, and I think that's one of the things that the mayor is alluding to as far as we don't have, we, we can't make a phone call to Company A and say, these are your communications lines on this pole. It's junking the place up, come out and move it. And their response is, we, we'll, because law allows it, we'll get to it when we get to it. I would prefer that all utilities went underground. I have a plan for that. But I, I really don't like the idea of, I know you want 20%. And is that 20% above ground in Greer or system-wide?
System-wide, our engineer, Josh Manning, would prefer it to be 100% underground. That's our model. But what you say is very familiar to me and 100% accurate from a Spectrum perspective in my old life. And I would handle individual cases about the cable company not moving their wire to allow a pole to be removed, but I would get to it after it had gone through channels for maybe three to six months or more, maybe a year. And our model is to go 100% underground if we can, for beautification reasons, as you're talking about, or, you know, public safety and, and disaster recovery. We have, we have, our cost model allows for that.
Well, I can't see having any more wires hung up and down Point Set Street because it's, you're not only running parallel whether you're on Duke's poles or whether you're on CPW poles, then at some point, they got to cross, and it just adds more and more and more to it.
And I don't know if that's because Point Set already has, there's no conduit, if it's particularly paved or it's hard to bury it, or people just decided they didn't want to do that. I'm just not familiar with.
Recently, they've put in some kind of conduit, you know, that they were doing all over this, I guess, the state, and it was run up and down Point Set. I'm not sure, not even sure what, because it, it didn't come into our purview, right? We didn't, they were tearing up our streets and sidewalks and that kind of thing.
Somebody went underground because those, those.
Yes.
Bigger cable vault things were what were tearing, they were tearing the sidewalk up, putting those things in.
They're in our neighborhood today. They're, AT&amp;T's installing fiber in Burgess Hills, Mount Vernon, so they've been up there, they've been up there all week.
They're going underground?
Uh-huh.
They're doing it in Maulin, too.
But I will say, it is a very invasive process. There are a lot of people, a lot of moving parts, a lot of, a lot more aggressive digging than I anticipated, a lot of sod removed and little mounds created. But I will say, I thought, I think they've done a really good job of smoothing it out. And if you drove up there right now, you really can't tell that they've been there. And as far as, you know, fiber is concerned, I, I think I said this about a year ago, I had an issue with one of the providers just, I mean, systematically jacking up the bill every single month and with no recourse. And, you know, I ended up having to call, and, you know, you threatened to leave and play the game with them or whatever it is. So I'm, I'm really excited about you, you know, bringing this service into our area and giving us another option. Is this, is this Lumos going to be, what, what are the capacities that you're going to provide or as far as the bandwidth? And do you know the price points or anything like that?
Yeah, our, our one gigabit product right now, which is faster than anything that Spectrum is offering, obviously AT&amp;T Fiber can offer one gigabit, which is, right now your, your cable modem from Spectrum is probably giving you about 200 to 300 megabits downloaded for about 80 bucks a month or so. Our one gigabit product is $70 a month. So it's putting competitive pressure there. There's an additional $10 a month for Wi-Fi service, so it's, it's in that range, but we haven't gotten the full measure of competition yet. So like you said, you could call and threaten to disconnect from Spectrum, where would you go, to AT&amp;T? You could call and disconnect from AT&amp;T, where would you go? Back to Spectrum. There's not really any leverage from the consumer standpoint.
Like you said, a duopoly. I think you called it that.
A duopoly, yeah.
You're right. Is that your entry-level product level?
No, sir. We actually have a $40 product that we don't, you know, we don't, we'd like people to get the gigabit product for the reasons of our Internet for the Future, but we have a 200-gigabit product right now, a 200-megabit product right now for $40 a month. So, you know, and that's important to have. It's important to have from digital equity, from, you know, if people don't want to download movies and they just want to do email, we would like to be an option for them.
I think what you're hearing and sensing in some regard is, is, you know, I, I think we all support a competitive product and, and one that will, will enhance our ability to attract business and attract residents and all the kinds of things that come with those sorts of amenities. But once bitten, twice shy. And I think we're, we're, some of us are a little bit leery about, about what has happened in the past. And so enough said about that.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I know that this wouldn't happen in, in this particular location, but in our downtown, there was a warehouse that was subdivided for several businesses. And, and of course, they all had phone service, so it was all overhead. And then anytime anybody moved out, the phone, the line stayed overhead. It was just.
Cluster.
Yes. And, and, and we've got clusters overhead, and it just, you know, I would like to see the engineering report for Greer that says, yeah, 20%, and it's not, that 20% is all made up on Point Set. I, I wouldn't want to see that at all. But, I mean, they're able to, somebody's able to go underground. I don't, it's, I'm just, I'm tired of destroying the look of our city with utility providers, not knocking Lumos at all. I'm just saying that because the way the legislation has been established for everybody, that the cities have, we don't have any recourse. And then that was one of my questions. I was thinking, are you bury your lines and somebody comes in inevitably, they're going to dig it up and they're going to cut it? The, or is it your employees or is it your subcontractors that come out? And how rapid of a response is your plan to get that line up and going?
It would be contractors in most cases, or many cases. But, you know, we don't have a service-level agreement under the residential model, which is eight-hour response time or 12-hour response time, which you're used to in your business. That's the contract you sign. But I mean, nowadays, when internet's out, there's a natural compulsion to get that restored as quickly as possible. It's, you know, it's, it's, it's a five-alarm fire, so to speak. It's naturally occurs, but.
Speaking of, of residential, in our older neighborhoods, and by this map, it looks like it will take into several of those, will that be underground as well, going from wherever the, the connection is made on the main line to, from the service line to the house?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We, we plan on being 100% underground, but the 80/20 rule plays.
I got that. I, I, you know, best-laid plans, right?
Yep.
So if you, if you come to a location, let's, let's just say one of our, our Mill Villages, and you've got overhead utilities, does that automatically say, well, that gets, gets, that's an aerial?
No, sir. We would dig, we would dig a trench and put Lumos fiber underground if we could get, if we could get into, if there was no limiting reason for us not to get underground. And Councilman, you brought up a good point, and the mayor asked about leverage. You still have the permitting process. So, you know, as we negotiate this, we still have to go through the city to get permits. And if you want to see certain things with Point Set Street or certain areas, that is something that you all can ask us to do, and we would be more than happy to, once we get familiar with the geography of the city, to, for you to get the information that you need from administration as we go into different neighborhoods on the permitting process.
Mr. Mayorman, so if we have, we have this agreement, but then when they come and do actual construction, they, that has to go through our building and planning?
They have to, yes, sir. That, well, it would be, yes, they, they would have to go through that normal process. There's an established fee, but that doesn't preclude their requirement to go through our normal processes for street cuts, et cetera.
Does the established fee include the contractors that they'll be using either for installation or repair? Or is, are those contractors required to obtain a business license?
Those contractors will be required. In order to do business in the city, they're going to have to have business license.
Gotcha.
Counsel.
David, if you could help me understand, I know a portion of our fees that, like insurances and communication providers and municipal association will handle those. Are they, would they still fall under that? Or I know certain areas are exempt.
No, sir. That's what I was referring to earlier, is as an internet provider, they are exempt from business licensing as a company. So to Mr. Arrowood's point, the contractors doing the installation are still required to do that, but Lumos as a company is exempt from business licensing either from us or through the statewide collection process with the municipal association. That's where they do, excuse me, municipal association does collect from the telecoms as one of the industries that they collect statewide. But as an ISP, they're exempt under state law.
What, is this agreement transferable if, let's say, either you, is it transferable if Lumos sells to Company X for whatever reason? Or, or does Company X have to come back and redo the, I didn't, I didn't see that.
I think there's, I think there's an assignment clause.
Yep.
And I'll have to go back and double check, but yeah, there is an assignment that allows for that transfer under the same terms.
So in theory, they're, they were funded originally by a private equity firm, but if AT&amp;T came in and said, we want to buy Lumos, they could do that in theory?
The assignment would require them to be subject to all the terms and conditions in the franchise agreement anyway. So the city's protected, but between now and second reading, I can verify that with legal counsel.
I, I'm comfortable with a first reading, nowhere near close to a second reading, but Mayor, I'm.
Well, yeah, that's fine. We are, you know, we are, we are at the point of, of, of first reading. I don't, you know, I don't know that, depending on, you know, when this comes before us, if it comes at the next meeting, they obviously aren't going to have engineered drawings for the whole entire city or the, the parts that they're going to cover. So if you, if you've got questions, you may want to get with staff or, or Mr. Brazil, Brazeez, to, to look at those. But in terms of first reading, questions, comments? Further discussion at this point? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
We don't have a.
We don't have a motion.
We do not have a motion?
No.
For the purpose of discussion? Seems like a long time ago. For the purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 7-2024.
No move.
Second.
Any further discussion at this point? Questions or comments? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir, for your time and information this evening. If you will be available through our staff for questions as we move along in this process, we would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. And I have my business cards that I'll give to David, and they have one number, my cell phone number, that's the only number that I have. So I'm available to any questions at any time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel, we have no items for executive session this evening. Counsel, we have no items for executive session this evening.
Mayor, before you gather this to a close, big shout-out to Greer High, Riverside High School, they are competing against one another tomorrow for the upper-state championship, along with the Riverside Girls are playing, who are they, they...
I don't know who that is. Westside?
It might be Westside.
I think it's Westside.
But if you're going to go, we've got to travel to Florence, so, anyway, but great, I mean, they're representing the city, so it's a great thing.
Yeah, and that's quite a feat, and we'll be looking to recognize somebody, hopefully, in the state championship, and we'll go, we'll go from there, but safe travels to everybody that is going to be heading, headed to Florence tomorrow to watch two local teams play. So, with that, anything else? Speak now or forever, hold your peace. Stand adjourned.